Today is March 12, 2024. The time is now 5:41 PM. Thank you for your patience. We just got out of a budget workshop. So our council meeting is beginning a little later. Welcome all of you back to council chambers. I know it's been a while since we've been here. So it's glad to see your faces. Glad to see you all here. We begin our meeting with our invocation given by Councilor Carolina, and he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty and heavenly Father, we praise and thank you for calling us to serve your people. Bless us with an anointment and make us a vessel of your grace to touch the lives of your people. Father, use us as a channel of compassion. Help us to be worthy of your trust that we may be an instrument of Peachtown County. Make us agents of positive change to achieve your dream of transformation. Finally, we ask that you heal our land and restore faith and righteousness in our nation. This we ask in your mighty name, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Carolina. Prior to us approving the agenda, Team Georgetown had been working diligently with other offices in an effort to promote Georgetown County. And their work has really resulted in us receiving some funding from our federal government. I think Councilor Anderson has been rather instrumental in assisting with that. Can you give us an update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Yeah, we... And it's been, Angela, how many months ago that somebody came knocking on your door and said, "Give us a rough order of magnitude of what we're going to need to do dredging in the Inner Harbor?"
Two years.
Two years, okay. Okay, a little bit longer than I thought. Anyway, we got a surprise earlier this week. I got a text message from Congressman Russell Frye, our new congressman, telling me that the... I guess they're... We're having funds now again, and I forgot the name of them at the federal level that was cut out for a while, where there was actually a few billion dollars in earmarks. That's what I'm looking for. So we were able to put something together quickly because they needed it right away. And we put a ROM together of $6.5 million. And so we got a surprise recognition here, I guess, Wednesday, that it was on the president's desk, and the next day he signed it. So we now have, thanks to people like Lindsey Graham and Tim Scott and Russell Frye, we have $6.5 million for dredging. And as I recall, that may take care of a recurring support there, the initial dredging, and then maybe four years down the road or five years whenever we need it again. We'll have enough money to dredge twice. Would you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if you get a chance, reach out to your senators and congressmen and thank them for their help because we've been working on this a long time. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson. I think we need to just give Team Georgetown a big round of applause for sticking with it and acquiring some money for Georgetown. Thank you. Now, when we move on down to the approval of our agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda as published?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Newton is there second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Anderson. Any discussion? No, I'm sorry. Carolina, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose, opposing carries. We'll move on down to our special reports and presentation. We'll have a virtual presentation, from my understanding, regarding New Morning, and it will be done by Mounds McDonald.
Yes, we can. Wonderful. Thank you for coming and having me here. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and tell you all more about our work as a nonprofit serving the great state of South Carolina and the wonderful county of Georgetown. We'll start with just telling you a little bit more about who we are. New Morning is a nonprofit located in Columbia. We serve the entire state, and we lead the largest state-based statewide birth control access barriers, breaking down barriers to access to ultimately reduce the unintended pregnancy rate in South Carolina. More importantly, we work to ensure that every woman can control if and when she wants to become pregnant, allowing her to live life on her terms, including completing school, starting a career, and creating the life she wants. Helping women control their fertility, allowing them to decide if and when they want to become pregnant, is a fundamental right. New Morning believes that every woman, no matter how much money she has or where she lives, should have equitable access to comprehensive contraceptive health services. New Morning has charted a new path for reproductive healthcare access for the women in South Carolina. We've broken down barriers and changed the landscape of contraceptive health. Cost is one barrier to access. The bill can cost $50 a month, and even the over-the-counter oat bill is $20 for a one-month supply. Other methods are more expensive. A depot shop, for example, is $300, and an IUD can cost more than $1,000. For uninsured, low-income women, this can be unaffordable. And monthly methods, the use and affordability, can be inconsistent. Access in rural communities is also a barrier. Thirty percent of counties in South Carolina have no OB-GYN. And those living in rural communities can travel more than 30 minutes to see a medical provider. Extending healthcare services beyond OB-GYNs and integrating this care within patient-centered primary care providers is an essential piece to increasing access to all patients. We train providers across the state on CDC family planning guidelines to ensure providers have the skill sets and competence to provide this care to patients. Since the program launched in 2017, New Morning has built a network of more than 150 clinics to expand access to women across the state. The network includes hospitals and hospital outpatient clinics, federally qualified health centers, rural health centers, college campus health centers, and free medical clinics. The goal: to empower medical professionals in primary care settings to provide these services and reach patients where they live and where they go for other healthcare needs. In Georgetown County, we partner with St. James Health and Wellness, a federally qualified health center operating six clinics providing these services, including Andrews Health Center, the Choppy Side, Fraser Street, Georgetown Pediatric Center, Sam Pitt Side, and Andrews Annuums. Since 2017, we have provided trainings to more than 8,500 attendees, including back-of-the-house and front-of-the-house, and providers ranging from nurses to physicians and OB-GYN residents. This last year, we increased our onsite, in-person IUD and implant training to host 19 different trainings across the state and open these trainings to anyone, inside and outside our network. To reach our audiences and to increase public awareness, we launched an education campaign called No Drama. New Morning created this consumer-facing public education campaign to provide medically accurate information about all birth control methods and connect people to healthcare providers. We use billboards, radio, digital advertising, and social media to drive consumers to our educational website, nodrama.org. The website has attracted more than 1.8 million unique visitors and connected thousands of patients to care. A visitor can make an in-person or virtual appointment, find a clinic, learn about different birth control methods, and find out how the program works, including learning which methods are free and low-cost. The website is very user-friendly and accessible by individuals with disabilities, and it's also available in Spanish. Ensuring everyone has access to this information is imperative to empowering women to control their healthcare choices. If you know your options, you can be an advocate for your wishes. Today, we have provided services to more than 485,000 patients across South Carolina. We are in every county in the state. And just last year, we provided over 87,000 women with these services. In Georgetown County alone, we provided over 3,000 patients with care, and in 2023, it was 385. So what does this all mean? How do we know this work is moving the needle? Last year, DPEC released new data from a pregnancy intention survey that showed a 44% decline in unwanted births and a 16% increase in intended births between 2017 and 2020. This tells us that more women are planning their pregnancies and having children that they want and are prepared for. Studies show that women who plan their pregnancies are more likely to go to prenatal doctor visits and have preconception care, including taking prenatal vitamins and understanding any underlying health conditions they may have that would put them at a high-risk pregnancy. However, this work has far more long-lasting impacts than we can measure. By giving women the tools to plan their fertility, we empower them to live life on their terms, go to school, start a career, travel, explore, or whatever else she wants to do with her life without the disruption of an unexpected, unplanned, and unwanted pregnancy. Since the program began, again, we have had a significant drop in unintended pregnancies. From around 45%, we've dropped to just 37% since the program's launch. And we've got a significant economic impact. For every dollar spent towards birth control, we save $6 in public funds. And today, with the serving of over 485,000 women, we've saved $820 million in public funds. And in Georgetown County, that equals $5.4 million in maternal and birth-related gross costs. New Morning is ultimately hoping to provide a foundation for women to pursue their dreams, whatever they may be. And as one of our patients said, "It's not that I don't want children. I just don't want them anytime soon, especially now. I'm only 20. I have years ahead of me to get ready. I'm not anywhere near financially stable or emotionally ready for that yet. So it's probably going to come later, and I want to plan that out." No Drama gave me the ability to be in control, and I want to stay in control. Thank you all so much for having us tonight. And if you have any questions or want some more information, I'd be happy to stick around and answer any, or you can email me.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Any comments from council? Thank you. Thank you for providing the information to the county. We really appreciate it. Thank you. We will move down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note that there will be a countdown on the screen noting your time. Also, we asked that you conclude your statements properly at the end of that particular timing period. Also, please note that council will not be responding to any of your public comments during this particular meeting. It does not mean that we have not listened to what you're saying and taken some action regarding it, but we will not be responding to your comments at this particular meeting. Just wanted you to be aware of that. If you don't hear, if you ask a question and we don't respond... The policy of council is not to respond to comments made at public comments meetings at the beginning of the meeting. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for public comments this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we do have nine speakers signed up tonight. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. And our first speaker of the night is Mr. William Cooper.
Good evening, council members. This week is Sunshine Week, where the importance of open and assessable government is observed. The following appeared in last Sunday's Post and Courier, and I thought it timely and important. I thought it a timely and important reminder. What would it look like if we never knew what our public officials were doing? What happens when no one is dedicated to watching their actions? What if we didn't have the ability to ask questions about those activities? Most importantly, how might that impact our community? Is it appropriate time to think about these questions and to remind our county government of the importance of freedom of information? We strongly believe in the existence of open government, and therefore, the freedom of information is essential to our democracy and encourages our officials to behave both ethically and in the public interest. We also believe that the truth does not fear being challenged, and we are persistent in getting it. While anyone can obtain records through a Freedom of Information Act quest, roadblocks and hindrances, such as costly fees and delays, have discouraged everyday citizens from submitting them. And that is where newspapers like The Post and Courier and The Coastal Observer and Georgetown Times can come in to help. As members of the county council transact the public business this evening, please keep in mind the necessity of open discussion and transparency in every discussion and decision.
Mickey Stikis.
I'm just here to comment on that resoning. Hey, is this the appropriate time to make my comments? Or when that's...
Yes, it is.
This is... My name is Mickey Stikis. I own the Village Shops in Paulies Island. I am opposed to the resoning application for the following reasons. I have existing commercial uses on my property, as well as on the hammock shops, that their restaurant and music venues that are not permitted in adjacent to any residential units. By changing the commercial designation on the front of this property, it puts my uses in jeopardy and possibly in a non-conforming category. The noise from bands and the odor emanating from the restaurants with residential properties butting directly up behind my property is going to be a problem. And although the developer has proffered to acknowledge the pre-existing nature of these uses in the HOA documents, it's not going to preclude homeowners from objecting and calling the sheriff and filing complaints, and it's going to wind up in litigation. One particular venue on my property has been in operation since the mid-1980s. I've submitted a fact sheet to you, effectively showing you what this all is. The comments were made at Planning Commission that they could effectively buffer, but the buffering ordinance refers to public health, safety, welfare, and specifically mentions noise and odors emanating from the property. It's not feasible to buffer unless you want to put a 30-foot wall. In addition to that, changing the designation from commercial to residential negates the interconnectivity ordinance that was enacted after the 2003 Carver Study. This connectivity between commercial units was designed to keep traffic off of the highway and allow people free movement without going on and off the highway. If the property was developed as originally zoned, there would be interconnectivity between the Village Shops and the Hammock Shops, facilitating... the Village Shops and the Hammock Shops facilitating people to come up, to exit on Lax County Road and come out of the traffic light at the post office. That's not what you require. My conclusions are only in the handout that I gave you. And thank you very much.
Kathy Reed.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Reed, and our property adjoins a Tanner property as well on the northern border. And you have a handout that I've provided to you, and we respectfully request Georgetown County defer this rezoning and allow the Flume Conservation Preservation to prevail until they've completed their own level of delineation and stormwater impact while prioritizing aligning the Georgetown County's comprehensive plan. So I started with the end of my report that you have in your hands, and I want to focus on three maps and try to present you with evidence that supports these maps and the Georgetown County maps, which essentially we showed to the Planning Commission. I feel like the evidence that's being ignored and I remember stamping, oh, wetland delineations here. So I think everyone knows on the agenda later, this is Conservation Preservation map, showing this property, oh, Conservation Preservation. You know, maybe, just maybe, this map is correct and is not an error. We purchased this property over 20 years ago. We told the family who gave it to Tanner wanted it to be Conservation Preservation, and that it was a wetland. It doesn't matter what you have in your handout. This is from GIS, showing this green area right here is a wetland. This is the area I would love to have someone come out and look at specifically. Because it shows as a wetland on the GIS map. It shows on this old 2012, which your wetland expert here will tell you that's inaccurate. But I would love to have Georgetown County have their own expert come out and actually test this. We've lived there for 20 years. I can, we can see this is very wet land all the time. And I've got several pictures here. I don't know if they're being passed around. This was from a nor'easter, three to four feet of water in this area in December of 2023. The wetlands raining from on the north side of the property to a creek that runs all the way across the property. So I'll just conclude by asking one more time, if Georgetown County would please consider coming out, looking at this property, having your own study done, and deferring anything, any decisions on this until you've done a full, full study. Thank you very much.
Alex B.
Lost, lost. No submissions are in yet. Yet the dropdown menu shown on the earlier meetings on the screen is now hidden from the public. Only agencies and towns may see and submit this link. You are also not giving the Microsoft Teams Live on the premise that it will crash, which how do you know for sure if it hasn't been tried? And other governments have it with public meetings. So the PIO can be on from Georgetown, and the public will have to drive hours all over the county to attend. And you're posting audio, not video. It's better than nothing, but who is speaking is unknown. Before the meeting in Andrews, the chair was joking, I'm going to say little person instead of the bejyard of M-word he used about a little person looking for books on high discrimination in the library, but they are too high on the top shelf to reach. Okay? Men and Chair Mark Hawn and your employees laughing at this joke. Okay, so not a joke to little people, right? And it is a hardship, like I remember a Denver mayor candidate who uses a wheelchair is upset about stairs. Stairs are everywhere. So they're listening to dozens of black residents complaining about no soars and sidewalks and even giving the chair a written paper like this, but it seems to be all talk unless people go to the government agency and they send in their project, telling a resident at first, no museum, when apparently it is allowed now. And a consultant is paid how much to sit there? Paulies Millionaires saying essentially, "I used to be poor, a pastor's son, I'm really from Andrews, trust me," while their presence there or from Disney is illustrating the racial wealth gap of white households having 20 times more than black households, and there was no meeting at Merle's Inlet. Also, the Francis Marion lecture, I heard a white man, North Carolina sculptor in the lobby at Winyaw, saying a black woman would get paid more than him to make a sculpture, and he is trying to put a Robert E. Lee Confederate sculpture taken down in Lexington, Virginia. Hmm, and maybe wants to make a Marion sculpture here. How maybe this SC-250 is standing in for the old lost cause, the Confederacy. The Wikipedia says Francis Marion and enslaver may or may not have raped enslaved black women. He killed Cherokee indigenous people in war and received an order to execute black enslaved people who fled to the other side, the British, who claimed to offer freedom with the, from slavery in the Philsburg Proclamation. I looked up the footnote and does have that order, but doesn't say how many, if any, were executed. In the museum, they're talking in hushed tones about Oscar, not who he is. As one costume man interjected, "You mean the slave boy?" Yes, talking about he was hanging out or friends with Marion. Uh huh, right. He was enslaved. He could not leave, and they want to put him on the mural over there together. So there is a portrait in the Capitol with a black enslaved man in the corner, serving sweet potatoes, said to be Oscar, except there's all legend and gossip, and author Mason Weems, who had George Washington's cherry tree myth, was involved, and the professor who spoke said they don't really know how Marion looked like. Maybe muralized someone else like teachers and not a swamp fox or swamp rat. And what would Harriet Tubman do? All power to the people. Free Palestine.
Don Park.
Paul, did I hear your name? Anyhow, I'm Dan Park. I'm with the Earthworks Group. I am representative for the Tanner rezoning. I want to let you guys know that we are here for any questions you guys might have. We also brought our wetland specialist with us tonight. He's lined up to speak after I am to address any concerns that you guys have with this property. We heard already about the adjacent property owner being worried about residential being allowed on a commercial property. Residential is already allowed on the commercial property. The only reason I'm before you guys tonight is because we're trying to get the setbacks changed. That's the reason we went through the FDD. We worked with Keep It Green Group to try and come up with a good plan that works for this site. We, excuse me. In doing so, we pushed those houses farther away from the commercial, towards the front of the lot. Right now, the existing setbacks for the residential on a commercial property is 50-foot front setbacks. We are trying to get that down to a more reasonable 20-foot front setback so we can push everything away from those businesses and keep them off of them. I heard some of the questions about the wetlands and stuff, the wetlands that the other lady was referring to, and I'm going to defer to our wetland specialist, but I know for a fact that those ones are general guidelines, that no one actually went out into the field to proof those ones, and he will be able to speak better towards that. Does the county council have any questions for us specifically on this? I'd love to answer anything you guys have.
No, we cannot respond to you.
Okay, that's fine. Just want to make sure that we are available if you guys want to send us any questions or anything. Staff has all of our contacts. We haven't heard from anybody yet on this, so I assume that you guys have not had any real issues with the project, but if you do have, please email us. We're happy to respond and answer any of you guys' questions. That's pretty much all I have. Thank you all.
Charles Oats.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you for having time to let us speak today. I want to give you an update from our last meeting with the Corps of Engineers. I have spoken with the project manager. We're in the process of trying to set a date, do the site audit on this site, as well as there are some potential concerns for the northern adjoining residential property where there may have been some wetland fill placed in there. You can see the wetland is very sharply ends on the northern property boundary, which in 30 years of doing this.
Sir, can you speak into that microphone? Just pick it up a little higher or something?
I'm sorry. I'll bend over. Do I need to start over, or do you? Discontinue? Okay, so we will be doing a site audit to audit the wetland delineation. Hopefully, that's coming up soon, as well as looking at the northern residential property for the potential of wetland fill that was placed there without a permit, based on past history of 30 years of doing this. Wetlands very seldom ever end in a straight line unless there's something artificial that was put there, and you can see on the northern property boundary where this wetland just stops abruptly at a yard. So we'll also be looking at that when we do our site audit with the Corps of Engineers just to kind of get some determination on that process. So I will be around throughout the meeting if anybody has any questions, and thank you for your time.
Dwayne Draper.
Good evening. Dwayne Draper with Keep It Green. Should I put my glasses on? That would help. You have two agenda items tonight relating to the Magic Oaks rezoning. They both concern the property along Route 17 and between the hammock shops and the Village Shops. One item is for a change in zoning from GR to an FDD that would drastically reduce the residential density from a high-density district that could allow up to 130 multifamily residential units to a flexible design district or FDD that would allow a total of 27 single-family homes. Keep It Green is in favor of reducing density in the Wakamon Neck and therefore supports this downzoning. We want to thank the designers, earthworks, for considering the community and its development plans and for requesting a change to a zoning district that is in line with community concerns. The other agenda item is a request to change the comprehensive plan, future land use map from Conservation Preservation to Medium Density Residential. I want to be very clear that Keep It Green would never be in favor of a comprehensive plan map change that increases density, and we are not in favor of this one. If this seems inconsistent, it's because the county has been inconsistent by allowing GR zoning to exist on a parcel that is designated as Conservation Preservation on the future land use map. That should never, ever happen, and it is confusing at best. The Planning Department suggests the possibility that the CP designation on the future land use map may have been a GIS mistake. However, they have provided nothing definitive to demonstrate a mistake. We know for a fact that this land has been designated CP for many years, and there may be a good reason for that. The fact that the Planning Department does not know that reason today is not a legitimate justification for it to be changed. If this designation is a mistake, it is a very big mistake on the official map. If it is not a mistake, then it would be an even bigger mistake to change it. So to summarize, while we are certainly in favor of the zoning change to downzone this land, we are not in favor of the map change. If it's okay to have a GR zoning district there now with a CP map designation, then it should certainly be okay to have a far more restrictive FDD zoning with the CP map designation. Thank you.
Cindy Person.
Good afternoon. My name is Cindy Person, and I am here to speak on the Tanner rezoning as well. I will follow up on Dwayne's comments. You've already heard about the irreconcilable inconsistencies on this parcel. It's really unfathomable that we have general residential on a parcel that is designated CP. This inconsistency was created by the county's failure to bring zoning into accordance with the comprehensive plan, and this is a very serious problem that has existed on the Wakamon Neck for decades, and it puts everyone involved in this situation in a very unfair position. The landowner, the developers, the adjoining landowners, the neighbors, the citizens, and even the Planning Commission. In this case, we are grateful that the developer reached out to the community before moving forward with the GR development in an effort to address community concerns about high-density, multifamily development on this environmentally sensitive property. Of course, Keep It Green and the community 100% support a downzoning from GR to FDD because it substantially decreases residential density, which is in line with the organization's mission. The difficulty here is that you have a FLUE map amendment on your agenda that increases residential density, which citizens don't support. We're puzzled by the need for a FLUE map change because it's inconsistent with your own passwords and actions, as well as the official position you have taken on this issue. You say that the FLUE map is nothing more than a guide. You didn't find it necessary to amend the FLUE map when you approved three high-density developments in Parkersville on land designated by the FLUE map as medium density. You had no problem whatsoever with the fact that the zoning was out of sync with the FLUE map, but today, your green sheets tell you that this downzoning requires a FLUE map amendment. If the FLUE map is indeed nothing more than a guide, and if zoning is not required to be consistent with the FLUE map, then there's no need to amend the map to accommodate a zoning change to downzone the property. If, on the other hand, consistency with the FLUE map is a requirement, then the FLUE map is far more than just a guide. We will be watching the details of this decision very closely for any inconsistencies with what you have said or done in the past, especially with respect to the minority community of Parkersville. Thank you.
Jerry Shea.
Good evening, council chairman. Thank you for having me today. I'm Jerry Shea with Congressman Russell Frye's office. I just wanted to do a quick introduction. We have these resources in the back. I'll be here after the meeting for your constituents. We have, you can go on Frye.house.gov if any of your constituents have any issues with a federal agency. We're here available. We can't promise a favorable outcome, but we can say we can fight in the trenches with you. I'm 100% disabled veteran, and I have the privilege to work for Congressman Russell Frye, one of the hardest-working congressmen I know, and just thank you guys for all you do as elected officials and putting in effort. Thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you all.
Our final speaker for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you all for all of your comments. We move on down with our agenda. We move, we look at our concerned agenda. Six matters on the concerned agenda were previously approved by virtue of the Agenda Approval Process. There are procurement number 23-031, architectural services as needed. Procurement number 23-065, rebid fire systems inspection, monitoring, and maintenance. Procurement number 23-061, roll-off truck for solid waste collections. Procurement number 23-060, brown boom truck for solid waste collections. Procurement number 23-087, grinding of yard waste, land clearing debris and clean wood. And procurement number 24-026, landfill compactor. We move down to our public hearing regarding ordinance number 24-04, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 23 operating budget of Georgetown County. The floor is now open for public comments regarding ordinance number 24-04.
Good evening once again, Dwayne Draper, Keep It Green. I usually prepare remarks when I speak for the council. Tonight, I have mostly questions, and I know you can't answer them, so I'm not expecting answers, but perhaps food for thought. And I'm speaking in regards to Section 15 of Ordinance 24-04. First question, what is the true purpose of the Georgetown Alliance for Economic Development? What is the relationship between the Alliance, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and the Georgetown County Economic Development Department, a government entity? Why is the same person listed as the contact on the Alliance website and also as the contact for the department on the county website? If the Alliance, a nonprofit- If the Alliance, a nonprofit, owns the 14-and-a-half-acre tract adjacent to the old Mercom site, originally slated to become a technology park, why are the loan payments to Santee Cooper being made by the county? What is the underlying authority granted for that purpose, and are all payments in compliance with that authority? What was the original purchase price of the tract, and what is the remaining balance? If ordinance 24-04 before you tonight for third reading in ordinance, why are appropriations in the Special Economic Development Fund increased by $220,000 to allow for payoff of the loan between the Alliance and Santee Cooper? Perhaps Section 15 in ordinance 24-04, which concerns this additional appropriation, should be deleted and considered separately after such questions are answered. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments, I mean, public hearing comments?
Yes, sir. Good evening again. Happy Sunshine Week. With respect to--
Will you state your name again for the record, please?
Absolutely. Cindy Person from Keep It Green Advocacy. I am wanting to speak about Section 15 of Proposed Ordinance 2404. And in particular, I'm just hoping that in the context of your decision on this issue tonight, that we will learn what the relationship is between the Alliance and the county. I understand from previous correspondence with the county that the Alliance is a separate and independent 501(c)(3) charity that is not connected to the county. It's not a function of the county. So our question is simply, by what authority is the county paying the mortgage on property that's owned by the Alliance on a loan that is between the Alliance and Santee Cooper, secured by that property? The county's not involved, at least according to public documents, in any way, and we simply want to know, what is the underlying authority? We don't know. It's probably there. There's probably something legitimate. I haven't been able to get it from the county or the Alliance because no one responds to my FOIA's. But if we could just have the answers to those questions in the context of this decision tonight, that would probably go a long way to build trust between the community and the county. Thank you.
Any further comments? Seeing that the public hearing is now closed. We move on down to our resolutions and proclamations. Resolution number 24-07, to declare April 2024 as Fair Housing Month in Georgetown County. Ms. Brooke Ackers.
Sir, this is a resolution that we do every year. April is nationally Fair Housing Month, and Georgetown County generally mirrors that action and makes it Fair Housing Month in the county as well. The county's position is that all of its residents should be afforded the opportunity to attain a safe and decent living environment, so we will encourage you to accept this or pass this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions for the IO? From council. Cena. Is there a motion pertaining to Resolution number 24-07, to declare April 24 as Fair Housing Month in Georgetown County?
So moved.
Is moved by Counselor Carolina.
Second.
It's second by Counselor Elliott. It was moved by Counselor Carolina for approval of the motion or for approval of the resolution. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, and it was second by Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to our third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 24-04, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 23 operating budget of Georgetown County. Ms. Langston.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Council. Ordinance 24-4 amends the fiscal year 23-24 budget for the items specifically identified in that document. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have on any one of them. Otherwise, staff requests that you give third reading approval to ordinance 24-4. Please note that the ordinance has changed since second reading, so you'll have to do a motion to amend the text.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Langston from council? Cena. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-04?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is moved for approval from Counselor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? Is there a motion to amend ordinance number 24-04 to incorporate the revised text?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
The move by Counselor Newton. Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
Second by Counselor Carolina. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing that, we will now vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment to incorporate the revised text, please raise your hand. Oppose? Then we will go back to the main motion, which incorporates the revised text. All in favor? I think we have already called for discussion on it. Any discussion regarding the revised motion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We will move on down to our second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 24-05, an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map regarding 8.3 acres of TMS number 04-0158-060-00-00, located along U.S. Highway 17 in Paulus Island from conservation-preservation to medium-density residential. Ms. Richardson will be making that report. I understand, Counselor Anderson, you had a comment regarding--
Mr. Chairman, I move that we defer ordinance number 24-05 and the complimentary ordinance 24-06.
Okay, let's take them one at a time, since it seemed to be--
That's fine.
Okay, so you're making a motion to defer ordinance number 24-05.
Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay. We have a motion from Counselor Anderson to defer ordinance number 24 -- well, second reading of ordinance number 24-05. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McCallough. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Now we go down to ordinance number 24-06. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Georgetown County regarding 8.3 acres of TMS number 04-0158-060-00, located along U.S. Highway 17 in Paulus, from general commercial along U.S. Highway 17 in Paulus Island, from general residential and general residential to a flex design district. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-06?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we defer ordinance number 24-06.
We have a motion from Counselor Anderson to defer ordinance number 24-06. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McCallough. Any discussion? All in favor of deferring ordinance number 24-06? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Ordinance number 24-06 is deferred. We move down to our approval of minutes from our council meeting on February 13, 2024. Is there a motion pertaining to those minutes?
Amendment.
Moved by Counselor McCallough for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Newton. Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We will now be moving into executive session for briefing and discussion regarding an economic development matter pursuant to SC code annotated Section 30-4-785. Is there a motion to move into executive session to have a briefing and discussion regarding economic development matter?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? We now enter executive session. We're not into executive session.
...